Thank you all for coming. We would like to call the meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chair, give me one second. Chairperson Fiermonte is absent. Vice chairperson Velado?
Here.
Commissioner Valoz?
Here.
Commissioner Becker is absent. Commissioner Booker?
Here.
Commissioner Mayrano is absent. Commissioner Locke?
Here.
Commissioner Quintella?
Here.
We have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This regular meeting of the City of Bayonne Planning Board has complied with the Open Public Meetings Act sunshine law, and it will notice that the schedule of regular meetings was published in both the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger newspaper. The schedule of regular meetings for the calendar year 2025 is filed with the city clerk's office and has been posted to the bulletin board in the lobby of the municipal building. A copy of the agenda of tonight's meeting was emailed to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger at least 48 hours prior to this meeting and is posted in the bulletin board in the lobby of the municipal building and the City of Bayonne website.
Madam Chair, next on the agenda is the adoption of minutes. We have the minutes from the December 10, 2024 meeting. If there are no changes or amendments, I'll take a motion in a second to approve those minutes.
I'll move.
Commissioner Velado?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Abstain.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Quintella?
Aye.
The minutes have been adopted. Next, on the communications, we have on our agenda item number 10, which is P-24-010, 398 Broadway LLC, Block 226, Lot 44. And we have a letter from Mr. Weeks requesting that this matter be adjourned from the regular planning board meeting to the next regularly scheduled planning board meeting of February 11, 2025, and that would be without any further notice on the part of the applicant. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the carrying of that matter?
I'll move.
Second.
Vice Chair Velado?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Quintella?
Aye.
Okay, that matter has been carried. Next on the agenda, we're going to make a slight deviation, and we're going to move item number seven up to item number six, and that's P-23... Oh, there's... I'm sorry. Before we get started on the public hearing aspects of this, we have something that we carried from the last meeting, namely our reorganization. And accordingly, we need to do some housekeeping before we get started. We have the election of officers, and the first office that would be available would be that of the chairperson. The chairperson this evening is absent, but if anybody would care to nominate her or somebody else...
I nominate Karen Fiermonte.
And can I get a second on that? And on the vote, it would be Vice Chair Velado?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke?
Aye.
Commissioner Quintella? Vice Chair, you're present this evening. Would you like to continue to serve in that position?
Yes.
Can I get a motion in a second to nominate Ms. Velado as the vice chairperson? I have a motion, and can I get a second?
Second.
And on the vote, Vice Chair Velado?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke? Commissioner Quintella? Next on the agenda would be the appointment of board personnel. We can do this in bulk, and I'm going to read out the names. Oh, secretary. I'm way too fast for myself tonight. Secretary's position, in the past it's been George Becker. If somebody would like to nominate Mr. Becker to be the secretary again in a second on that?
I'll nominate George Becker.
Second.
And on the vote, Vice Chair Velado?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke? Commissioner Quintella? As to board personnel, it would be myself as board attorney, Suzanne Mack as the city planner, Suzanne Bischoff as the court reporter, CME Associates as the engineers, along with Andy Reichel of Waterman as the engineers as well, Alicia Lashanzi as the board administrator, and I believe that we have Clark, Hayden, and Hints as the board planners. Am I missing anyone? You looked at me. I did not say Beacon, as well as Beacon Planning. Can I get a motion in a second to approve the board personnel?
I'll move.
Second.
And on the vote, Vice Chair Velado?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke? Commissioner Quintella? Next is the calendar for next year. That would be this evening, January 14, 2025, February 11, 2025, March 11, April 8, May 13, June 10, July 8, August 12, September 9, October 14, November 3, and December 9, all of 2025. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt the calendar?
I'll move.
Second.
And on the vote, Vice Chair Velado?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke? Commissioner Quintella? And that is it on the reorganization meeting. Next on the agenda would be, as I started to say before, P-23-001, Presentation of a Non-Condemnation Area in Need of Redevelopment Study for Property Located in City Block 418, Lots 3 and 4, Block 419, Lots 1 and 1.01, Block 427, Lot 3, Block 480, Lot 1, Block 481, Lots 3, 3.01, 5.03, and 6, and Block 482, Lots 3, 4, 4.01, 5, and 6, to develop a map reflecting the boundaries of the proposed non-condemnation redevelopment area and to determine whether said property constitutes a non-condemnation area in need of redevelopment pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. And the presentation will be by Barbara Elan of Beacon.
Hi, good evening. My name is Barbara Elan Essent from Beacon Planning, and I'm here to present the area in need of redevelopment assessment for the IMTT properties. Did I hit the wrong thing? That was me. Do you want to just hit the next slide? I hit the... There we go. Okay. So just as an overview, the IMTT properties are located within the southeastern portion of the city. It consists of... The study area consists of 16 parcels, three of which are actually riparian grants, so they're water areas. The total area is approximately 209 acres, though it is a little bit scattered. It's not one solid block of land. And historic operations date back 150 years. This was the Standard Oil site, and as I understand, some of the original tanks are still in operation at the site. This evening, we're reviewing the properties, as you could see, outlined in yellow. When we go through the criteria, we qualify the properties under several criteria, which I'll list the different criteria per property as we go through it. But as an overview, we included B, the discontinuance of the use of a building or buildings previously used for commercial, retail, shopping malls, or plazas, office parks, manufacturing, or industrial purposes, the abandonment of such buildings, such building or buildings, significant vacancies of such building or buildings for at least two consecutive years, or the same being allowed to fall into such a greatest state of disrepair as to be untenable. Criterion D, areas with buildings or improvements which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, light, and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, deleterious land use, or obsolete layout, or any combination of these or other factors are detrimental to the safety, health, morals, or welfare of the community. Whether the properties located in UEZ zone, which is Criterion G, and Criterion H, which is the smart growth. What we noticed about these properties right off the top is actually the environmental impacts of the historic operations on these properties. So due to former petroleum-based activities and other bulk liquids that have been stored there, there has been environmental impacts to the properties, and the cleanup is quite cost-prohibitive, not prohibitive, but cost-expensive to these particular parcels. I also noticed... We also noted that there's limited infrastructure, so there's not a full sanitary sewer system there. There's not stormwater management, which becomes particularly important as it's located right next to the water. And also, the parcel layouts. So the parcels have been carved up into unique shapes pursuant to the users of those sites. So it's not necessarily easy to take one parcel due to their unique shape and their isolated locations. To start, these are parcels most in the northwest, Block 418, Lots 3 and 4. They're approved with bulk liquid storage. They are subject to flood zone AE12, and they were qualified under Criterion D and H. So D relates, again, to the obsolete layout. And as you can see, the parcels are uniquely configured and irregularly shaped. Block 419, Lots 1 and 1.01. They are also approved with a bulk liquid storage and a two-story warehouse. Lot 1.01 is a grant riparian, a riparian grant. On Block 1, there's actually a two-story warehouse where the second floor remains empty. It's been storm damaged for so many years that it's actually inoperable at this point in time. This area is subject to flooding. It is in flood zones AE12, AE13, AE15, VE16, and VE17, with the V zones related to wave action. It's a little bit cut off, so give me one second. Lot 1 was qualified under Criteria B, D, and H, and Lot 1.01 under D and H. Block 427, Lot 3, is improved with a one-story structure and outdoor storage, so it's bulk storage, I believe for actually construction fencing. It is also in flood zones AE12 and AE13, and it was also qualified under Criterion D, G, and H. So uniquely enough, it is the only parcel located in the UEZ. Next up is Block 480, Lot 1. It is also approved with bulk liquid storage, as well as the firehouse. It is in flood zones AE11 and AE12, and it was qualified under Criteria D and H. I'm sorry, that's cut off. Block 481, Lots 3, 3.01, 5.03, and 6. Again, they're approved with bulk storage, with bulk liquid storage, flood zones AE12 and AE13. Lot 3.01 is a riparian grant, and they were qualified under D and H. And this is Block, the final one, Block 482, Lots 3, 4, 4.01, 5, and 6. Again, improved with bulk liquid storage, as well as a one-story industrial building. The building is actually kind of isolated with access provided via an E. It's been over an adjoining property. And Lot 4.02 is a riparian grant. It's subject to flood zones AE12 and AE13, and it was qualified under Criterion D and H. And that was the end of my presentation. Were there any questions that I could answer?
Any commissioner have any questions? Go ahead. Just a lock?
No, it's just... And the current... I switched over. It's due to the existing configuration of improvements. They're all subject to flooding because of the flood zones they're in. So redevelopment assessment, the redevelopment area in need of redevelopment finding would permit them, opens up new tools in order to help them address issues associated with the flood zones.
And then are any of those areas currently inoperable, or they're all being used?
They're inoperable.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The only item that wasn't really operable was the two-story warehouse. They couldn't use the second floor of.
Commissioner Booker? Quick question. You mentioned UEZ in one of the properties, the area. Can you kind of fill me in on that, UEZ?
It's an urban enterprise zone, so it's... They're subject... There are different areas within the community that are designated urban enterprise zones, and they usually have something like a favorable tax incentive in order to incentivize investment into those areas.
Thank you.
Any other questions from members? Yes, smack.
Thank you so much. This is a result... By the city on this project. It's a very important part of the city. I think Barbara's report is excellent, but for the historical context of the project, it's 20% of the landmass of the City of Bayonne, which is, you know, like, this planning board does many, many great things every month, but occasionally, we have MOPB, we have TexasCo. This has a very, very major impact. And so I had prepared just a couple paragraphs to put on the record, if you don't mind, commissioners. I'd like to offer the historical context of the actions being considered tonight. The predecessor of ExxonMobil played a major role in shaping the history of Bayonne. It built one of the largest oil-based industrial complexes in the world, employing tens of thousands of Bayonne residents from the 1870s onward. Numerous European immigrants arrived at Castle Garden and Ellis Island Immigration Centers, took ferries to Hudson County, and then trains to 22nd Street railroad stations. From there, they walked to Standard Oil to apply for jobs. So what I'm putting in context, I only have one more paragraph, is this is the rich history. When you go on to the city's website, Bayonne is considered the city of industry, and many of those industries have moved out of Bayonne, but this is our history. And I am so proud of the fact that we're part of something that will, with IMTT, to move it forward. And so I'll read the second paragraph. "As Standard Oil and its successor companies reduced their presence in Bayonne in the latter decades of the 20th century, Bayonne Industries and then International Matrix Tank Terminals, IMTT, acquired large parts of the former of oil refinery property. IMTT, which stores and ships bulk liquid cargo, became the largest property owner in the City of Bayonne." These are the properties of the subject of the study represented here tonight by our wonderful planning consultants, Beacon Planning Group. So I just want to... I want to note this because, like, we look at the report, it's got blocks and lots. It doesn't tell us really what we're doing tonight, which is we are moving the history of Bayonne into the 21st century through the good efforts of the partnership that we have with IMTT to make our... make these lands redevelopable. And I just want to... I just want to put that on the record for you. I've said this to you over times on other projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Yes, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just briefly, you've seen a lot of area in need of redevelopment studies in the city over the last 20 years. This one hits all of the big-ticket items and hits them with a hammer. It's low. It's vulnerable to flooding. It doesn't have infrastructure. It has aging facilities, and so, like Sue said, excited to see the city embark on a reimagining of Constable Hook, which is, like Sue said, 20% of the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Any comments from anyone? Questions? Seeing none?
I think that concludes your report.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
So at this point, the board can vote in favor or against approving this and forwarding it to the city council for consideration to approve the redevelopment assessment in this area.
Do I have a motion?
Hold on a minute. You do have to open it up for public...
We did.
We did.
Already?
Yes. Nobody came forward.
Nobody came forward.
My mistake.
But thank you, Brian.
Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Vice Chair Velado?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke? Commissioner Quintella? Thank you. Next on the agenda, we're going to go with the public hearing of P-24-037. That's Presentation of amended redevelopment plan for property located at 43-75 Mechanic Street and northwest of Route 440 between East 22nd Street, East 25th Street, in Block 451, Lots 1.01, 1.02, 2.03, 2.04, and 2.05, Block 45202, and Lots 3 through 9 and 11, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, formerly known as the Clayton Block Site. It says 037 as you wrote it out to me. Mr. Slough?
Thank you, Mr. Capociano. So the... What's before you is really a minor amendment to what was part of a scattered site redevelopment project, which looked at a lot of different sites in the city. There was the Scattered Sites 1. This was Scattered Sites 2. The entire report was not adopted, but certain pieces of it were, like the Best Foods, the Brass Foundry down on Avenue A, and this one, which was known as Site 14, because it didn't comp... That was just a number in the plan. And so here, we're looking as part of discussion with the landowner to establish, allow interim uses on the property. So this would benefit both the city, who has an ownership interest in some of the property, and some of the area's been redeveloped already, but this would look at the remainder of the site, the remainder of the tract itself. Interim uses are something that have been contemplated by the planning board before. The Marist, former Marist High School site, for example, this board reviewed and recommended to the governing body that interim uses be allowed in that area, too. So I did send out the entire report, because I think many of you probably haven't seen it. This was originally done back in 2013. So 11, 12 years ago, this was put together. Sometimes redevelopment takes a long time. So the only aspects that were changed in this were to add a definition of an interim use. That's on page 21. And then the other part was to actually indicate how this would work, and this is similar to other applications that can be made before this board, where you can make an application for this interim use within the redevelopment area. There are certain things that are excluded. You can't have some of the heavy industrial uses that would otherwise be allowed in the district, the zoning district, that is. And the board would need to make a finding that it doesn't create adverse effects by having interim use on the property itself, as well as impeding the ultimate goal of the redevelopment plan. So how this would work, then, is that the applications would be made. There would be a certification from the city planner and the city engineer and/or redevelopment engineer, depending on the context, regarding the above conditions, saying that they would not create adverse effects or problems. This would be for a period of two years, and then an applicant could come back and seek one-year extensions for good cause shown. So what one of the effects of this does, it allows property that's remained fallow for some time to generate both revenue for the city and revenue for the redevelopment themselves as they seek to work out the complicated redevelopment plans that we often see. And this area is complicated because there's very limited access, and it's constrained by some of the property on the site from getting from one side to the next. And so this would allow that to occur with the board's permission and application to it, and that would be the change that is proposed for the Site 14 section, the Scattered Sites project.
Thank you.
Mr. Slough, just to clarify for the board, that would be the procedure if they recommended this to the city council, and the city council adopted the amendment to the plan?
That is correct. It's an ordinance adoption, like any amendment to a redevelopment plan.
Okay. So any questions, commissioners? Anyone? Any questions from anyone? Comments, commissioners? Comments? Seeing none? I need a motion. Motion? I need a motion.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
And on the vote, Vice Chair Velado?
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz?
Aye.
Commissioner Booker?
Aye.
Commissioner Locke? Commissioner Quintella?
Thank you, Mr. Slough.
And Mr. Slough is going to remain at the podium because the next presentation is by him as well. That's Presentation of Item Number P-23-012. That's a redevelopment plan for property located at 28-34 East 22nd Street, known as Block 212, Lots 30, 31, and 32, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, also known as the Frizinski Funeral Home. And Mr. Slough, proceed.
Easy for you to say.
Was practicing.
Very good. I'll probably just say funeral home. Yeah, so this is a redevelopment plan that follows on from an area in need of redevelopment designation that this board had done previously, which, if I actually looked at the beginning, I might be able to tell you when that was. But aside from that, this is the plan to implement redevelopment sort of mid-block on East 22nd Street. There's also a long, thin part of the tract actually goes to East 21st Street, suitable for a one-way operation driveway. It's... You could have a 16-foot driveway. Can't have a commercial or multi-use driveway that's that narrow. So it would have to be one-way. And so the plan and the context of this is that nearby buildings include the Our Lady of Mount Carmel Roman Catholic Church, and adjacent to it, which in itself is a beautiful building, and then adjacent to it is an even more stunning building, which is the St. John Paul II Parish House. And I haven't quite figured out what that style is yet, but it's highly ornamented, well-maintained, and provides context for across the street for kind of the high quality that we would look for this new building to take place. It would be three parcels involved. One is the funeral home itself, one's a single-family house, and one is a several-unit apartment building. And so those would be... are under control of a single redeveloper. They would be consolidated as part of the development and redeveloped into multifamily housing. Six stories allowed, 85 feet, consistent with administration policy about mid-block redevelopment. with administration policy about mid-block redevelopment. So the plan follows through from a lot of similar kinds of applications that you've seen, where we've had a lot of demand in the city for multifamily development apartments for people to live in. And this difference here is that it's very close to the 22nd Street entrance to the light rail system. It's less than 500 feet. When we're in that kind of close contact, and this is in also the underlying district here, it's a transit development district intended for more intensive multifamily use here, is that we have a lower parking ratio, because study has found, and there's been testimony before this board, that in this kind of context, usually you see a demand for parking at about .7 spaces per residential unit. Where this report requires .9. That is similar to the 2000, sorry, 218, 222, 220 Broadway Plan, which has a similar structure, six stories, recreation on the top, has parking on the bottom. There, because of its proximity and its particular location, that was the area where we suggested a coffee shop, even a counter-fronted coffee shop, where you could, you could have sales from in the building and also out the building in good weather. This is a little different context here, being as it does, close to Broadway, close to the central business district, where there's already a lot of commercial retail development, in between particularly Library Court and Broadway itself. And then there's also a little bit of additional commercial development, some of the new buildings that have been constructed on Avenue E. So in this context, we felt not necessary to have a retail or office component, like in some other parts of the city, that they would be well-served by the existing development that is there today. So the, so the plan has some requirements for setbacks along the side yards. This would be similar in that there would be parking on primarily the first level, probably mechanical parking is what would be anticipated, then the residential development would be above that. But there isn't actually anything that would prevent them from having some apartments on the ground level, too. Really depends on how that layout works out. Typically, of course, we have a lobby. We typically have a package storage room. We've got trash storage and things like that. The typical kind of amenities would be required here. Other things that are fairly similar is you can have rooftop amenities. You can have some rooftop recreation. And so that, we think, creates the modern amenities that people are looking for, and seem to be successful in other buildings that have been constructed here. So we're continuing that policy here. There would be interior loading. They do have the option of seeking it on-street, but the first line is to have off-street loading for this building. And they would be able to accomplish that, depending on the design, just by utilizing the straight-through shot with the exit or an entrance from 21st Street, too. So instead of the truck having to turn around, they could just go right straight through the building. So that would work better, more easily done. So aside from that, it's a fairly straightforward plan. And if there's any questions about it, let me go through the slides, because that, of course, is the whole point of having this presentation up here in the first place. Am I doing the same thing that Barbara did? There we go. So Suzanne and I put this together, creating the redevelopment plan. So as I've said, creates opportunities for new housing, of which there's demand for that, more dense development within walking distance of mass transit, keeping the building design sensitive to the context in which it sits, improve the city's streetscape. So we're always looking to do that. The plan has the requirements for a redevelopment plan, particularly the goals and objectives for important set of development regulations, and then also design standards that go along with it, which the board has seen similar things today. Looking at this slide, the funeral home is on the left. They've decamped to Broadway, and the building's, I believe, been vacant for a number of years, but you guys probably know that better than I do. And then you can see also what the street looks like in the front. And then on the East 21st Street side, you can see what that looks like in the row, lower right-hand corner. The tract size is a bit over three-quarters of an acre. As I mentioned, this is the context, which has some great cast stone accents and brick, and particularly with the parish office and the YMCA. So the uses are straightforward, as we've discussed before, very similar kind of layout. Size of the units at 500, 650, and 800 is pretty standard for most of the redevelopment plans we do, and does not allow three bedrooms at this time. We'll probably be looking at that a little bit more in the future as to balancing that out within the city. And then the tract and yards requirements, there's effectively, I think, they'll be, would have the building up at the street, create a street wall, have that kind of more urban sense to it, like you've seen with other similar buildings constructed in the city. Parking requirements would also include bicycle parking, which is at the, have space for dwelling in it, which is pretty standard for us. That seems to be working out well, too. And you'll see that in the site plan application this evening, where they have a large bike storage facility on the ground floor. And the building design standards, really emphasizing masonry as the primary building component, because of the context in which it is on that street. So we're not looking, in this particular instance, for more of the loft industrial look, which has more metal panel, has that kind of finstration evoking an industrial age. In this instance, more traditional building because of the fact of the uses that are across and down the street. So this also would establish areas for street planting, pedestrian use, and seating, if the developer wants to put seating out the front. And obviously, they have to comply with ADA and multisensory wayfinding to get to the place. You may see, may recall, in the picture of the street, there is actually incised and designs in the sidewalk today. We would seek that to occur with any site plan that would be developed for that. Lighting is also fairly, and landscaping requirements are fairly standard as well for the plans. Is that because we can't think of anything else? No, the standards we think work well for the city. Any questions from the board? I'd be happy to try to answer them.
No? Does anyone have any questions that they'd like to ask Mr. Slough? Seeing none? Thank you so much for that presentation.
You're welcome.
I need a motion.
Motion. Second.
And on the vote, Vice Chair Valado.
Aye.
Commissioner Valoz.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella.
Yes. We'll take a few, a few-minute break, five-minute break. Okay? We'll be right back. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order, back to order.
Roll call. Vice Chair Valado.
Present.
Commissioner Valoz.
Here.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella. Next on the agenda is item number nine, P 24-030, 26 North Avenue Urban Renewal LLC. The site is North Street, block 297, lot 3. The applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, along with any ancillary relief to construct a 14-story mixed-use building containing 500 residential units, 455 parking spaces, and approximately 6,929 square feet of retail space as part of the redevelopment plan for this property. Mr. Mocelli?
Thank you, Mr. Campesano, Madam Chair, board members, board professionals. My name is Michael Mocelli. I'm a partner at the law firm of Prime Tivella Mocelli. I represent the applicant, 26 North Avenue Urban Renewal LLC, in connection with an application for block 297, lot 3, which has a street address of 26 North Street. Some of you have seen this building before. It's subject to a redevelopment plan that was put in place in 2015, 2016. It's the, it's the terminus of the light rail. It's where the light rail ends, and, and close to where the old A Street station used to be. The property was initially part of the A Street rehabilitation plan. I'm not sure if anyone was on the board back then, but, but we received approval under that redevelopment plan for the first of two contemplated 22-story towers. It was very ambitious approval. That was in 2015. The approved building was 244 feet in height. And that approval endured over several years and was extended, including through the pandemic. And we have obtained extensions until December 2025 for that approval. But alas, that project did not come to fruition. So we approached the city to rethink this site and figure out how we can continue to construct a meaningful project at this key location, like I said, at the terminus of the light rail, but one that was maybe not quite as lofty in its ambitions. And we agreed with the city to provide a redevelopment plan to reduce the height of the project. So there was a new superseding redevelopment plan that was adopted, and the effect of that plan was to supersede everything that we had done before that with the A Street rehab plan. This board recommended that plan amendment, and the council, I believe, adopted it unanimously. The plan that's before you, once we testify to some certain tweaks that we have to make, is, is an as-of-right site plan application, and is entitled to all of the legal rights attendant to that status. Should the board approve the plan, this plan in front of you tonight, we are asking that the resolution acknowledge that the prior approval, the one from 2015, is not abandoned by the adoption of this approval, and instead remains intact, subject to the terms of a redevelopment agreement that we entered with the city, that basically says that old approval will go away once we have all these new approvals for the 14-story building outside the appeals period. So we don't want to give up that one until we know we got something else. And I think that's fair, and that's what, we entered a redevelopment agreement to that effect, and that was a fair resolution. We don't want to be stuck with zero if things don't work out. So tonight, we're seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for, as Mr. Campesano said, a 14-story mixed-use building. This building will be 153 and 1/2 feet in height, a significant drop from the prior approval. It will have 500 residential units, 455 parking spaces in an enclosed parking garage, and it'll have several building amenities and other site improvements that are on the plans that you have in front of you. Because the project is so large, and because it's an integral to, to us to protect the zoning, we're asking for extended zoning protection of five years as well. We anticipate the project will move quicker than that, but we want to have the zoning protected to make sure. So again, this application is as-of-right, complies exactly with the scaled-down version of, the scaled-down project that my client and the city agreed to, and the board recommended as part of the redevelopment plan. And I would like to call, we have three witnesses tonight. We have Juan Rodriguez, our project architect. We have Joe Sparone, our project engineer, and John McDonough will make an appearance, just in case all of you miss him. We have exhibits that I'd like to enter into evidence. Those are, have been premarked as exhibit A1 through A30. We'll have a couple of additional exhibits, but those are the ones that have been premarked. So, Madam Chair, with your permission, I'd like to enter those into evidence. And then I'd like to call our first witness, our architect, the project architect, Juan Rodriguez. Yes. Yes.
Good, good evening, commissioners. I do. Juan Rodriguez, J U A N R O D R I G U E Z. Commissioners.
No, Mr. Rodriguez, can you present your qualifications to the board, please?
Yes, I am a New Jersey licensed architect. I have a license that is in good standing. I have appeared in other boards, similar to, you know, this board, and Jersey City Hoboken. I myself have not appeared in this board, but I have a lot of experience working in this type of building type.
And you have an educational degree in, in, in architecture?
Yes, I received a bachelor's of architecture from New Jersey Institute of Technology.
And you've been accepted as an expert in architecture and other?
I have.
We accept you as an, as an expert witness. Thank you. Welcome to Bayonne.
Thank you. So as, as Michael has pointed out already, this application is kind of working off of a previous approval. The approval was a much taller building. It's, you know, within this new proposal that we have, we think that this is something that the scale is a little bit more appropriate, maybe, for this area. You know, the 14-story building height is, I think, just going to kind of feel better on this site. You're seeing here our first exhibit, which is an aerial photograph of the site. The site itself is 1.88 acres. You'll see in the image that it's bound by North Avenue, along the top of the page, running left to right, and along the bottom on the south is Route 440. Also along the, the south end is the, the existing Hudson Bergen Light Rail track. The elevated portion kind of stops at the end, at the east end of our site. To, to the east end of the site, there's also a one-story retail complex. There's a Walgreens there right now, and some associated parking. And on the west side of the site, there's an existing kind of underdeveloped lot.
Can you now turn your attention to the proposed development and take the board members through that?
Yes. So what you're seeing here is a PDF of a series of drawings. This set of drawings greatly matches the set of site plan drawings that have been submitted along with this application, with the exception of a few highlighted items, which have been revised for the purpose of this conversation. These were in response to planning and engineering memos that we received prior to this hearing. All of those items that have been revised have been bubbled and dated with today's date.
Thank you. So in terms of what we're proposing, just to step back very quickly, this site is currently vacant. Is that correct?
That's correct.
But there was a supermarket there in the past?
In, in the past, yeah.
And the proposed uses, what uses are we proposing on the property now?
We're proposing a mixed-use development consisting of 500 residential units, 455 parking spaces, 6,929 square feet of retail. There are also 16,369 square feet of indoor amenities that will be for the, the residential development. We also are providing 266 bike parking spaces. And just to circle back, out of the 455 parking spaces, 76 of those will be electrical vehicle spaces.
You mentioned the number of units. Can you just take us through the unit mix and the unit design?
Sure. And, and I could cover that a little bit more, once we get to the, the floor plan exhibits. But out of the 500 residential units, the breakdown is, we have 145 studios. So 29% of the, the units are studios. Those are in compliance with the 500-square-foot minimum, as identified in the redevelopment plan. We have 235 one-bedroom units, so 47% are one-bedroom units, and those are in compliance with the 700-square-foot minimum requirement. And we have 122 bedroom units. That's 24%, which is the remainder of the units, and those are all at least 950 square feet.
Now, the unit design, just very quickly, they'll all have a window, an exterior window, right?
Correct.
And they'll all have basic amenities, washer, dryer, cable, TV access.
Correct.
Will have no dens that qualify as bedrooms, right? It's not like we're?
Correct.
Okay. You mentioned commercial space. You said that was 6,929 square feet on the ground floor. That complies with the redevelopment. That complies with the redevelopment plan?
Yeah, the redevelopment plan has a maximum of 7,000 square feet, and we're just a little shy of that.
And that complies with the requirement that we be between four and seven, right?
Correct.
Because it's a 4,000 minimum as well?
There's 4,000 square foot minimum and 7,000 square foot maximum.
Okay. Just stepping back to the bulk of the building, you said it's 14 stories. How many feet in height is it?
The building is 14 stories, and it is 156 feet with a few inches as measured from average grade, and 180 feet are allowed. So we're about 24 feet below the maximum allowable building height. There is also a small indoor amenity room that's on top of the 156 feet, but still that amenity room is below the maximum total building height allowed.
You mentioned the rooftop. Do we have any rooftop equipment there?
There will be some rooftop equipment. Any rooftop equipment that's going to be on the building will be set back from the parapets and screened from view from the street.
And it will be acoustically buffered?
Exactly, yeah. It'll be mechanically and acoustically both.
All right. Let's go back to parking. You said we have 455 parking spaces, all of the parking sizes, the stalls, they all comply with the redevelopment requirements, right?
That's correct.
There are no mechanical parking spaces in this structure?
Yeah, this is a fully self-park garage system.
You mentioned that we have EV parking spaces. There's a requirement in the redevelopment plan that those be located in a certain place that it's closest to the entrance or exit. Have you, has this site plan, in your opinion, done that?
Yes, I'll go to that page, just kind of jump around a little bit.
Yes.
In response to some feedback that we've gotten on the application, we did locate the EV parking spaces along the north side of the street. The thinking was that in the event of an emergency, that these could be serviced by the fire department, so they're all along the external wall of the building. The EV spaces are located on the second and third floor, so none of them are in the cellar.
Okay. And when you're talking about parking, I think it was Mr. Russo's report that asked about ADA access, how that's going to be provided?
Yes, the ADA spaces will be provided in compliance with the building code. As you'll see on this plan, we've located the ADA spaces. They're kind of spread out throughout the building, but they're located in proximity to the elevator so that, you know, if you're accessing those spaces, you have the easiest route to get to the building lobby.
We have, there was a comment about the type of ventilation that is going to be used in that parking area. Can you just testify to that?
Yes. While a passive ventilation system is indicated on our drawings, that's actually something that we're going to be revising. It was kind of flagged as a design waiver through some of the engineering and planning memos that we received, but we're going to be revising the design so that, and I'll go to the building elevation so you could see. Currently, the building facade includes an open-ventilated garage. We're going to be putting windows in or some type of solid wall along those openings and providing a mechanical ventilation system so that the garage is actively ventilated in further compliance with the redevelopment plan.
In terms of the building appearance, can you just take us through that? Just walk us through the way, the materials you used, the colors you chose, all of those sorts of things?
The best way to see that is in this rendering. You'll see, this is a rendering of the northeast corner of the building. North Street is running left to right along this image. The Walgreens parking lot is on the left side. You'll see that the building is composed as a kind of tower on a base, kind of massing with a three-story podium running along the length of the street. And then there's the kind of remaining portion reaching up to 14 stories, broke it up into pieces to reduce the scale. We thought that, you know, given that this is such a long block, it was important to break down the scale along North Street so that you get these kind of three different tower elements oriented along the street. You'll see in this rendering also that there's kind of more solid opaque materials along the base, screening the garage, and some of the kind of lobby areas have been opened up more. You'll see all the corner of the tower piece on the left. The retail facade wraps around the corner, which we thought was important so that, you know, as people were approaching the building, there's good visibility into the retail. That kind of gives way to the building lobby. There's a kind of open colonnade that allows residents to access the building at the middle of the block. Up above the podium, the building is primarily a metal panel and glass building. We thought that, you know, this kind of industrial kind of character would play well, especially as, you know, people are coming across the Bayonne Bridge, this building will be visible from that vantage point. And, you know, we even picked up the color of the metal panel to resemble the color of the metal on the bridge.
So this design, that is substantially similar with the concept architecture that's laid out in the redevelopment plan, is that right?
Yes.
There's a requirement, I believe, in the redevelopment plan that the southern facade would contain minimally reflective materials. I think it's because when people are approaching, they didn't want some glare on the building.
Yes.
Has that been accomplished?
Yes, and that's noted on our plans. So we would be working with our glazing, you know, spec to make sure that we have a minimally reflective glass and that the metal panel that's along that elevation doesn't have a high reflectivity on it as well.
There are balconies on this building, correct?
Yes.
There were comments, I think, in some of the reports about maybe some of the balconies projecting over the public right-of-way and some of them projecting into the rear yard setback. Have those been removed on this plan that you're showing here?
Yes, and you'll see that noted on this plan. On the right side of this floor plan, there's an area highlighted on the bottom right of the building where there were previously three balconies. Those balconies were removed as they, even though the balconies were above the light rail track, they were still within a 10-foot easement area, so we removed the balconies in that area. And then there were some balconies on the kind of northeast corner there that are highlighted. There were two balconies there that were also removed. Those were projecting beyond into the right-of-way, so we removed those. All of the other remaining balconies are kind of projecting beyond the building face, but they are on top of our property.
So that will comply, so now the balconies that are remaining, they will comply with the redevelopment plan?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's just go back to parking for a real quick second. Bike parking. There are requirements in the plan about that, that they be located in convenient areas, and I just want you to testify about where the bike parking, bike storage will be.
Yeah, you'll see here on the screen our ground floor plan. We've located the parking, kind of, all of the parking spaces are within the inside of the garage. If you're a resident and you're coming to park your bike, you'll be able to access the bike room directly from the outside, so you don't have to pass through the building lobby. Once you drop off your bike in one of the stalls, then you could come into the building lobby and you don't have to go back outside. So it's a nice flow to be able to let residents easily access the bike parking.
Now, you mentioned 76 EV spaces. That wasn't what was shown on the original site plan, and that's a change we're making as well to the parking area, correct?
That's correct.
And that entitles us to the state EV credit to reduce the number of parking spaces, correct?
Yes.
Going back to the bike storage, any bikes parked against walls or anything like that?
We do have some stalls, you know, up against a wall, but that's something that, if we need to revise, we could revise.
Okay, let's talk about the parking. So you said the stall sizes comply. How about the percentage of compact spaces? That complies?
Yes, that complies as well.
And all our handicap spaces, ADA spaces, all comply with the regulations?
Yes.
Barrier-free code met?
Yes.
There's a requirement in the redevelopment plan that we notify residents that they can't park on the street. They can't even get a resident parking pass. Would you agree to that on the record, that we're going to do that?
Yes.
Access to the parking area, can you just take us through that?
Yeah, there's a singular driveway located about mid-block that would, it's an in-and-out driveway. It's about 24 feet wide, and residents would be able to access all parking levels through this one entry point. So there will be internal ramps that allow residents to get into the multiple parking levels.
And those ramps and aisle widths, the maneuvering, those all comply with the redevelopment requirements?
Yes.
And access and maneuvering is all safe and efficient?
Yes.
There was a comment in one of the reports about the location of curb cuts, that they be relocated into the city right-of-way. Would we agree to do that as a plan revision?
Yes.
There was also a comment from the construction official that said that there was one exit that didn't discharge to the exterior of the building. Would we be willing to revise the plans to meet that comment?
That's, so from a building code perspective, we are allowed to have 50% of the exits discharged through intervening spaces. As our plans reflect, we have one stair that leads directly outside, and then the other exit would pass from the garage out through the building. That's something that I think we could work more with the fire official on to really align with them on.
Okay. So is it your testimony that will comply with the applicable code in terms of where the, where it leads?
Wherever the access needs to go, yes.
Okay. Let's go to building amenities. Let's go to the really nice stuff. What are the building amenities in this building? What are the proposed building amenities?
Building amenities, I'll start on the ground floor. They're located in three areas. We have an indoor, we have a building lobby on the ground floor. There is an associated package room and mailroom along the lobby as well. There's a small leasing office and another indoor amenity space on the ground floor. There are also two large amenity rooms on the fourth floor. The two amenity rooms are configured around two outdoor amenity decks. One is kind of oriented to face north, one is oriented to face south. The southern amenity deck, which is along the bottom of the page, we envision that that's a good place for the pool because it's going to receive the most amount of sun. And the north amenity deck, we think because of the height, you know, it's going to be a good place for residents to more passively enjoy some of the views from the property. And then we also have an indoor amenity room on the roof of the building with an associated roof terrace as well.
Let me just go back for one second. There was a comment or question, and there were requirements in the redevelopment plan about this. What's the security of the building on the inside, on the parking area and on the exterior of the building? Will it be security measures?
It's our understanding that there will be, you know, typical to a development like this, security cameras around the perimeter of the building. This will likely be a concierge building, so there'll be a man person at the building lobby. There'll be cameras inside of the garage, cameras inside of the residential hallways, and there'll be security and personnel to keep the property safe.
Okay. All right, now let's get down to how the building functions. The trash and recycling, how is that going to be handled in the building?
As you'll see on the ground floor, so through the curb cut that we have, trash vehicles will be able to enter inside of the building, and pickup will happen most likely through a private hauler. Everything will be happening inside of the building. We've also analyzed, you know, truck maneuvering and clearances to make sure that truck, trash vehicles can enter the inside of the garage. But the thinking is that we want to make sure that nothing was going to be visible onto the street, and the building management company will ensure that as trash pickup is happening, it's not in conflict with people, you know, coming in and out of the garage. That's the plan right now. The trash room has also been sized to make sure that, you know, as tenants are throwing garbage down, the trash chute comes down into the trash room. It, you know, gets compressed through the compactor, and there's enough room in that trash room to make sure that trash is not piling up in between those pickup times.
There'll be a compactor, trash compactor in this facility, right?
Yes, yes.
And that design, there are design requirements in the redevelopment plan? Our compactor will comply with those requirements?
For the compactor and for the trash chute as well.
Okay. And would you agree as a condition of approval to provide a recycling refuse plan, showing the operations manuals, pickup, estimated trash volume, et cetera?
Yes.
And can you come with this building?
We could do that.
Signage, can you just take us through what the plan shows about signs?
As noted on our elevations, we have, well, we're not showing any specific signage design. We have the requirements that are identified in the redevelopment plan for the proposed signage, limiting one building residential sign not to exceed 100 square feet. And then we have, same for the retail, we have a maximum one retail sign not to exceed 40 square feet. All the signage is to be, you know, mounted flat onto the face of the building. And, you know, any lighting sources for the signage are not to, you know, be hyper-visible from the street. They should be concealed from view.
Okay. This building will be designed in a sustainable way, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you just take us through some of the things that the building will include that will be sustainable?
Yeah, while the project is not seeking LEED certification, some of the things that we're going to be doing is we're going to have some green roof areas. We're going to have low-flow plumbing fixtures. We'll have a high-performance window wall system, so you have good glazing, good windows, and, you know, an efficient through-wall window HVAC system. Along with this, I believe that we're also willing to provide a LEED checklist along with the approval, if approved tonight.
Okay.
I would also just like to make a note while we're on the elevation that the project will have uniformed window treatments for all the residential windows.
There was a comment, I believe, in Mr. Russo's report, the engineer's report, about permeable pavers. Are we going to remove those?
Yes.
Or not show those on the plan?
Yeah, those were removed from this sheet. They were not applicable for the project.
In terms of the building construction, would we agree to submit a construction phasing plan as part of, as a condition of approval should this application be approved?
Yes.
Does the redevelopment plan allow us to phase the construction of this building?
It does.
Are we proposing that right now?
Not at the moment.
Are we going to reserve the right to do that and coordinate with the professionals?
Yes.
So just to clarify, there were a list of variances that I believe Mr. Slough's, the planner's, report identified. One was about the rear yard setback with the balconies. That's been removed, correct?
Correct.
The unit sizes, we've corrected the unit sizes on the plan that you just showed, right?
Yes, and I'll just go to that. You'll see that there was a line of one-bedroom units that were undersized, that's been revised. And there's also a line of studio units that was undersized, and we've revised that as well.
And now that we have the correct number of EV spaces, we're entitled to the credit. Do we provide the number of required parking spaces for this building?
Yes.
Required is 454?
Four, yeah. We have, and I'll just give a quick breakdown of what's required. We're required to provide one space for every 2,000 square feet of retail. That means that for the 6,929 square feet of retail, we need four spaces. We're required to provide one parking space for every unit, so that's 500 spaces. That brings our total required parking to 504. Like you said, we are taking advantage of the EV parking reduction, which allows a 10% reduction in parking, so that would deduct our 504, 50 spaces, bringing our new total to 454 spaces required. We're providing one extra, we're providing 455 spaces.
Let me just go back and see if there's anything else. Oh, did you mention that we were doing private hauling for the trash, right?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just see if there's anything else that we need to circle back on. Yeah, the building complies with all the setback requirements now that the balconies have been amended, right?
Yes.
All the uses are permitted?
Yes.
Supposedly, the building. All right, I think that would be it for my questioning of Mr. Rodriguez, if the board has any questions.
So any, do any commissioners have any questions?
Yes, I do. To Mr. Rodriguez, can you clarify, because I probably misunderstood, what is the size of the studio?
The studios are required to be 500 square feet minimum. All of our studios now with this set of plans are 500 square feet or above.
Okay. The other question will be related to the trash and recycle department or compartment. Due to the fact that it's 500 units in the project, correct?
Yes.
You're going to have private haulers, that's what you mentioned?
Yes.
I guess they're going to be collecting because the amount of units, probably twice a week.
Yes, well, that sounds about right. Usually, we, you know, if it's, if the hauler has to come back because trash is piled up, that's handled through the building management company, but that, about twice a week, sounds right.
For the amount of people or tenants, I believe there are going to be a lot of garbage, meaning... meaning that most likely the hauler has to be a regular standard truck, correct?
Yes, we, I believe that our garage and our engineer has an exhibit that shows some of the turning maneuvers inside of, inside of the garage, but we could accommodate a rear loader, a rear loader within our garage.
That was my concern because, you know, if you're going to be the ability to maneuver, I mean, turning around the truck, because it's a huge truck, high and inside, so.
And you'll, you'll see on the exhibit, we have plenty of space. We actually have two different types of maneuvers that we tested out, both work, and we have enough height in the garage with the ramps
Okay.
To get it to work.
But that would follow with the location that I have the trash compartment is, where's the truck going to entrance specific? Because you mentioned that I have one driveway, driveway in and out.
Yes.
Right? That truck going to use the same entrance or have a different entrance?
The, the truck is going to use the same entrance.
The same entrance.
And the thinking is that that would happen, you know, not when peak traffic flow is happening for the tenants, but on off-hours when, when, you know, there's, the garage entrance is not congested.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Any other question?
Mr. Rodriguez, thank you. Real quick, maybe I'm jumping the gun, but it'll be approached. I'm just curious, Simon, with this project and five hundred units and being familiar with that area, has there been any traffic study in terms of, you know, there's a local park at the end of this property you're talking about on the?
Avenue C.
On Avenue C, but I'm saying that's would be on the north part of this whole, this whole area. Any intersection with all the traffic? Have we done anything with that in terms of traffic?
Yes, we submitted a traffic report with the application, so you'll have that. We have our traffic engineer here. Should you have any questions specific to safety at those, those intersections? I think he did the traffic study, you know, the past, you know, past year or so, and so it's, it's fairly current. I think it takes into consideration all of the development and potential development in the area as well, and I think it concluded that every, that traffic particularly along this stretch was, was just fine. It's going to, it's going to be all right.
All right, thank you, because I know that is a pretty active park on that corner there, and it's a pretty wide intersection. And obviously the children that come and go to that park, I'm just curious about the traffic.
Yeah, I think there are, there are site, there, there, there's a traffic signal there, correct?
I'm not sure.
I think there's a traffic, there's a traffic signal at that corner, right?
On the intersection, there's several, there's several traffic
Yes.
Lights there that sometimes have to be understood and watched out because I myself have made a mistake.
Yeah, and I know, I know that intersection's, it's got a lot of things converging all in one place, right? So we can have our traffic engineer look at that just to make sure that it, that he feels it'll be safe. We can make that a condition of approval if you'd like, that, that we submit some sort of safety data to your, your engineer and that it satisfies him.
I appreciate that, thank you. And one last question, just real quick, forward-thinking, the multi-use, you're saying on the, on the bottom of the building, do we have any anticipation or any ideas on, what size is that again, that we're having on?
It's just, just a little under seven thousand square feet. And there's no envisioned tenant there yet, but, you know, we think that there's a different, a few applicable uses in the redevelopment plan. I mean, we would love for it to be a retailer, you know, a cafe or some, something like that, but it'll probably be, you know, some, some of those uses in the plan.
All right, very good, thank you.
Just one question, Mr. Rodriguez, you had mentioned there's four commercial parking spaces?
Yes.
Are they going to be designated in the garage? Will they have access to them?
We haven't really gone into that yet, but...
I think, I think we, we will if you'd like us to. We also, I don't think we mentioned this, so in the front of the building, we are doing an area that could be reserved for additional parking. It's a little, it's a pull-in area.
It's, it's noted on our plan here. There's, we have an indented area along the curb
Right.
Where we're adding six more parking spaces. Those are not within our, our parking count.
Right.
We think that, you know, that there's no parking there now that could be great for retail or...
So we can, we can mark those off. We would like, I mean, I...
Just concerned about access.
That's, yeah, we're, we're working, we would have to have some sort of system where, you know, people will come in with a fob or they'd get a ticket to go park in the, in the commercial spaces. More than likely, some of those will probably be for employees. Some of these on-street parking spaces will now probably become some of the spaces that are used for that space. The neighborhood can use the spaces. There are spaces that don't exist now, and it's always a good thing to report to Bayonne that we're adding on-street parking as part of a, an application. So I think with the combination of those two things, I mean, we can stripe them off, we can say this is just for the commercial, we can, we can figure out an access point or an access method that will, you know, fob in the residents and everyone else who isn't an employee of the commercial will have to pay. Thank you. All right, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Slough?
I believe the questions were answered, which was what uses are anticipated, just simply because there's an enumerated list.
Mm-hmm.
So I think if, maybe Mr. Maselli would just say, would stipulate that it'll meet one of the permitted, allowed uses.
Yeah, of course, yeah. Whatever uses are allowed, I think we have them listed here. Hold on. Yeah, there's a, there's like a...
It's a pretty long list.
It's a long list. It'll, it's got to be one of those uses, so we'll, we'll limit ourselves to that and that we know that if there's anything, if there's any tenant that isn't on that list, we can't, we either can't get them or we'd have to come back for redevelopment plan amendment, which is not likely, so.
I did want to make one explanation on the rear yard setback. So we identified the walkway that comes out as variant situation, but...
Mr. Slough, can you please use the microphone?
Thought I was, but I do have that low talker problem. Anyway, so I just wanted to clarify that it was hard to tell, I use, look at the architectural plan for the exit, there's a little walkway that comes out right behind the, the pink area and wraps around the building. It's an exit, it's for the staircase as well as commercial use. And it looked from the architectural plan, at least at that time, that it was about five feet up in the air. So in my mind, required, it was a principal part of the building and hence required a setback. But discussing it with Mr. Russo, he indicated that the grading plan shows it about two feet high, so we would not consider that anything other than just like a sidewalk, and the sidewalk would not have a setback. So I just wanted to clarify that in my report, that the rear yard variances only were related now to the balcony set to back, and that's been addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any questions from anyone in the public for the architect? It would be for the architect? You have a question for him? Can you please step to this microphone? Thank you.
Microsignal forty-two, question twenty-third. The, you mentioned phases of construction. I, I mean, the building's going to all go up, it's not going to be one part built and then open for residents and then start building the other part, are you?
Yeah, the redevelopment plan allows us to phase the construction into pieces. Our application tonight does not include any phasing. We envision that the project is going to be built at this moment within one phase.
Oh, I see. But if, so you could build like half of it and then stop, rent it and then...
Right now, we don't have a plan for how we would do it, and we haven't, we haven't even thought about it that way. It's always been envisioned to be one single phase.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have a question for the architect? You can, you have a question for the architect?
I'm not sure, like if it's for the architect. My question is that I like...
Come on up. Come up and we'll let you know.
Oh, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My name is Maria Silva. Maria Silva?
Can you spell the last name, please?
S-S-I-L-V-A.
Thank you, great.
Okay. And my question, I actually live right across the street from what, you know, it, we've had this permit, and like he was mentioning about the faces and all, this became a project of putting a building to now having a mountain of dirt. Now there's boats there, there's machines, there's, so when is this going to start? If, like, my understanding is that, you know, if this is going to be faces, is, like, is this going to, once this starts, is, is it going to change and be put a, like, my, like, I don't know what it's going to become.
Ms. Silva, let him answer your question. The question that I understand is when are you going to get started with this project, Mr. Rodriguez?
We haven't set a construction timeline. I mean, the first step in us starting is, you know, getting it approved now. Like I said, from the point that we start, it's going to become one single phase development. So it's going to, once the work starts, it's going to be about eighteen months or so of construction.
Eighteen.
And it's not going to, you know, stop and start, and you're going to see like halfway done things.
Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other question, have questions for the architect? Thank you.
Mr. Maselli, your next witness?
Thank you. Madam Chair, for our next witness, I'd like to call Joe Sparone, the project engineer.
Yes, Joseph Sparone, S-P-A-R-O-N-E. I'm a director with Dynamic Engineering located in Chester, New Jersey.
Mr. Maselli, Mr. Sparone has appeared here on numerous occasions, has he not?
Yes, he has.
And so we can recognize him as an expert based upon our prior approval with him?
Thank you.
And you're requesting that?
I am requesting that, yes.
Madam Chair?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We recognize you as an expert witness.
I remember when this, the first approval, I think I did the testimony on that one, was that like ten years ago now?
Yes, it was. We were younger then, but...
Yeah, it feels a lifetime ago.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Sparone? Do you have an exhibit that you want?
I do, yeah. Well, I think we have it set up here, it was, I believe it's eight twenty-nine, it should be the site plan rendering.
And just for the record, we have thirty-one and thirty-two entered, correct? Okay.
Yep, that's it.
Okay. Mr. Sparone, can you just take us through your, your plans, please, your civil plans?
Yeah, the, the exhibit in front of the board here up on the screen that was submitted is a site plan rendering. That's based on the site plans that were submitted to the board. Basically, it's the same site plan that was submitted. It's been colorized for presentation purposes. I do have eleven by seventeens. Help if you want them.
Everybody, hard copies, no.
I know, well, like, these are a little easier than the big plans, though, so, I don't know. If you're like me, it takes a little bit to see the screen. That's why I got these on. So as I mentioned, this is a colorized version of the site plan. It also includes the landscaping that was proposed, superimposed, to give you kind of real-life perspective of, of what the project may look like. As you can see, it's a full redevelopment of the entire site. If you recall the previous approval, the one for the twenty-two-story tower, I think the building was kind of located on half the site. Right now, this is going to expand the full site, so as was mentioned by the public, a lot of what you see out there, that's not going to be there anymore. It would be fully redeveloped. That redevelopment is going to include a brand-new streetscape design from one end of the property to the next. So when you're looking at it from the street, the frontage, it's going to look brand-new just like any other portion of the city that's been recently reconstructed. That streetscape will include obviously sidewalks. The sidewalks will be ADA compliant and meet all the regulations for barrier-free design. The sidewalks will obviously be designed for safe use. If you've been out there, a lot of the sidewalks in the area are a little beat up, a little old, so this will all be brand-new, not looking to keep anything. Be all-new curb, all-new concrete sidewalk. As part of that, the streetscape will be upgraded. That will include amenities such as benches, trash recycling receptacles, street lighting, or, I'm sorry, not street lighting, the lighting on this case will be attached to the building. Street trees, you'll have brand-new street trees that'll be about thirty-five feet on center. Where possible, there's certain portions of the development, as I'll go through, where, you know, obviously you wouldn't have a street tree, whether there'd be on-street parking and/or the driveway for the development itself. The street trees will be hardy, native or native-adapted species that are drought-tolerant, able to thrive in an urban environment. They'll be very similar to what's been proposed elsewhere in the city that you see growing on, growing in other sidewalk, streetscape areas, whether it be on Broadway or other areas of the city. The, the street trees themselves will be located within a thirty-six-inch by seventy-two-inch grate. That grate will be wide enough to permit healthy growth, you know, air, light, water, to get to the root system, but at the same time, it will be ADA-compliant grate, so it allows for pedestrian use for wheelchairs and things of that nature. While we're on that topic, there was one portion of the redevelopment plan which talked to multisensory wavefinding for the vision and hearing impaired. That will obviously all be done in accordance with ADA requirements, and we will address that as applicable, just like any other public city streetscape. In addition to the items that I mentioned, does this have a pointer? Yeah, it does. In this area here, you will see, which I think was mentioned to the board, there will be six new on-street parking spaces. As of now, there is no parking along that side of the street, so those will be brand-new where there is no parking. That will be open to the public, you know, whether it's going to be public parking, to use whatever other area in the, the area of that neighborhood, or the primary intended purpose would be for visitors to this building and/or hopefully what would be a vibrant retail use, you know, in that retail area. So not only people for the building can all access that retail area, but, you know, hopefully there would be people coming there as a destination to, to use whatever services In addition, the one other thing I want to point out, and this was in, in accordance with professional comments, I think specifically the engineer, Mr. Russo, the driveway will be reconfigured. What we're going to do is, right now, it's got a curb cut with the curbs returning to the building. We're going to make that more of a typical concrete driveway apron. We'll differentiate it from other portions of the, of the streetscape by using a brick pattern so that pedestrians can see that it is a driveway coming across, but what that do, what that'll do was bring the driveway basically up even with the sidewalk and basically just reinforce the fact that the pedestrian has to right away. So instead of the sidewalk dropping down to the driveway, the driveway will actually come up to the sidewalk elevation, which, which is typical. That's most driveways in the city, especially something in this type of location or the nature of this project. What that does is eliminates those ADA ramps and obviously enhances as far as accessibility. You no longer have to go down and then back up. It's just like the sidewalk carries through. So that, again, that goes along with that section P-nine and carrying through and making sure that, you know, everything's ADA-compliant. Only other last item I'll mention as far as the streetscape is the parking, as I mentioned, to be able to provide that parking in that area. The curb itself has to indent, so the sidewalk itself pushes in towards the building, so we are going to provide, or the applicant will provide, a public sidewalk easement because that sidewalk will now come on to the, the property to be able to provide basically a four-foot-wide barrier-free sidewalk through that area. Again, the benefit being that you get the additional on-street parking for, whether it be pickup, drop-offs, or whatever it might be. As I mentioned, lighting, so in this area, there won't be freestanding streetlights, but what you'll have is LED lighting along the building face itself. They'll be mounted to the building, they'll be mounted no greater than fourteen feet. They'll be, they will provide a minimum of zero-point-five-foot candles of illumination along the main pedestrian path and a maximum of four-foot candles along the main pedestrian path. So no longer than point-five, no more than four. There'll be LED light sources, which with the LEDs and the technology, they can be adjusted for shielding and to avoid spillage where, in areas where you might not want it. The light color temperature will be between twenty-eight-hundred Kelvin and four-thousand Kelvin and a minimum coloring, color rendering index of seventy or higher. Again, that's all specifically per the RDB plan, and the proposed lighting will comply. They will not create any objectional light. They will not create any objectional light at or across property lines, and can be further shielded and, again, redirected, as I mentioned, if needed. Landscaping, I touched on the street trees. There will be additional landscaping to accent entrances, arcades, sidewalks, commercial plaza, terraces, items of that nature. Same as the street trees, they'll be hardy, native or native-adaptive species, drought-tolerant, able to thrive in an urban environment. Landscaping, I think there were some landscaping recommendations that were actually made by the board planner, which we'll be happy to comply with. And the plant areas will be irrigated as needed. Rooftop amenity landscaping will include any appropriate drainage. That will be handled through the building systems themselves. And then all landscaping complies with ANSI Z sixty-point-I for nursery stock, and that was all included in the landscaping notes on the landscaping plan itself. Storm, kind of the boring stuff, stormwater utilities and mechanical equipment, proposed stormwater management in this case, will, the design itself will provide reduction of flows for you, probably one of the best ways to do it, a reduction in impervious coverage. So what we did is, as you can see, there's substantial areas of green around the building where it's currently paved. So we're taking the pavement, replacing that with lawn. That in itself reduces stormwater runoff. The building roof drain and site grading has all been designed to direct stormwater to the appropriate city system. All utilities are available to the building and the surrounding area. All mechanical equipment, which I think Mr. Rodriguez testified to, will either be on the roof or inside the building, so you shouldn't see anything on the ground surface itself, including transformers. Transformers, electrical transformers will be included in a vault interior to the mechanical room, so you won't even see electrical transformers in front of the building. So nice, clean look, brand-new streetscape. So the appearance of just a, you know, a brand-new frontage versus any kind of patchwork, keeping curbing, or whatever it might be. Along with that, again, another recommendation from the board engineer, we will mill and pave the halfway right away, so that just further, it's going to just all look like brand-new pavement, brand-new curb. So when you look at it, everything you see should look entirely new along that frontage, along that half of the roadway. Traffic impact statement was submitted. The Cliff Notes version, no change in level of service, no degradation to surrounding operating condition, so really nothing to report there. As was mentioned, we do have the traffic engineer available for any questions. And then as far as staging, briefly talked about it, the building itself is in vision to be constructed in a single phase. As far as any construction-type staging, staging will do similar to what's been done on other projects. Traffic control plans will be provided. Construction staging plans will be provided, and we generally do that at the pre-con level in association with the board engineer, fire department, city police department, and whatever other departments that might be appropriate. That, that, that covers my direct. I don't know if there's questions?
Got a couple of questions, just to circle back on the streetscape improvements. We've got trash receptacles and benches as part of that, correct?
Correct.
The crosswalk that we're providing, that'll have detectable warning surface?
Uh, the crosswalk will actually be eliminated. So the, the crosswalk, that was the driveway treatment, so that sidewalk, that crosswalk, better yet, won't even be needed. You won't even have the curb ramps anymore.
Do we agree to completely replace the fire hydrant that Mr. Russo's report referenced?
The applicant does.
Um, I think that is all I have for Mr. Sparone, if the board has any questions.
Any commissioner have any questions?
No questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Sparone, there are some other just housekeeping items in my letter. Would you agree to address those items?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Mack?
I just...
Yeah, you too.
This building was originally for twice the size. It was twenty-two stories. You did a traffic impact study for that. We made recommendations based on that, and so would you concur with my opinion that now that you're reducing it to fourteen stories, there's less of an impact, and therefore it's acceptable?
I would agree.
I...
Thank you, Ms. Mack. Any questions from anyone? Come on up.
Sparone, could you just move over to the, you have the microphone. Thank you.
I'm curious on that, well, if you're the right fellow to ask. This is right next to the Walgreens that is next to the Dunkin' Donuts, and I believe the driveway goes to the back and around for the drive-through.
Agreed, yep.
Right. It, when this is going on, is that driveway going to remain open, or is there any, or is this maybe that's where the traffic construction comes involved to it, or?
No, that stays as is. That's not our property, so we're not touching that as part of this project.
Wouldn't all that going on with this drive-through right there have an effect on this project? I mean...
No, I mean, again, it's, it's off the property. I mean, the applicant wouldn't be able to impact that adjacent neighbor without talking to them first, but there's no plan to do anything there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
Mr. Misselli, Mr. McDonough arrived just in the nick of time.
I couldn't have scripted that any better. His entrance is impeccably timed. I'd like to call Mr. McDonough, our professional planner.
And I'm not parked in front of a fire truck, I promise. Yes, I do. Sure. Hi there, everyone. Happy New Year, all the best in the year ahead. My name is John McDonough, M.C.D.O.N.O.U.G.H.
We accept you as an expert witness.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, were you, did you do a zoning analysis of this property?
Yes, I have.
Can you just take us through that with an eye towards the elimination of the variances and the design exceptions referenced in Mr. Slav's report?
Sure thing. We've been, we've, we've all been at this for a long time. We've seen a number of iterations with the redevelopment plan, but at the, at the heart of this application is an exclamation point at the terminus of your Hudson-Berg and Light Rail state, system and station. This is a project that, again, has been refined several times now, and we've landed at a spot where we think we have a realistic opportunity to create a project that, that is real, and will provide that exclamation point that is called for at this strategic location along the light rail system. This is going to provide ridership that will support our huge public investment in mass transit. It'll put people and riders right there where it should be. And again, symbiotically, there's going to be the mass transit, which will lessen the reliance on the automobile. In terms of the pure zoning aspects of this application, we know we have a redevelopment plan that's been written around this specific project and the vision that's before you. This is sort of a continuation of a redevelopment plan that has been amended along the way and refined to get it better and better. We think we've landed at a, at a good point now. Compliments to your planner, to, to your board and your professionals for a really well-written plan, and compliments to our applicant as well for essentially following your plan to a T. I think we all know that the essence of good planning is rooted in your zoning ordinance. There's some real strong case law in that point. It's not up to a board to make its own, I'll say, arbitrary decisions as to what does or doesn't constitute good planning. It's rooted in your ordinance. That's your roadmap. When an applicant follows it to a T, it should be approved. And again, you've got some solid footing from a case law standpoint in that regard. Top to bottom, this application is following the letter of your ordinance from a use standpoint, from all of the bulk controls, the height of the building, the density, the coverage, the setbacks, the parking. There were a few deviations that were identified by your professional that the applicant has corrected, so we've landed at a good spot now, where we're asking the board to move on an application that is a hundred percent conforming.
Mr. McDonough, this pro, this property's not in the historic district, correct?
This is not in a historic district, no.
It was previously used as a supermarket, right?
Correct.
And it's now vacant?
It is vacant land. It's been vacant for too long at a visually prominent location in the community.
And this redevelopment plan, it supersedes the redevelopment plans before it, right?
Importantly, it does. There have been many other plans before this and zoning before this, and yes, this supersedes all aspects.
We're also, not, in addition to seeking site plan approval, we're asking for an extension of zoning protection. Is that correct?
We are, under Section fifty-two of the law, subsection E.
And that is for large-size projects of this scale, is that correct?
That's the intent, realizing that, again, there are, are some complications, complexities involved with a, a project of this size.
So the minimum number of units for, for the number of years we're asking for, which is five, is what, a hundred?
The minimum number of units is a hundred. We're at five hundred here. So we're five, this is a project five times the minimum what this section of the statute envisions for extensions.
And we're proposing a sizable non-residential portion as well, at almost seven thousand square feet?
We are.
And economic conditions, this is part of the extension standards, economic conditions for multifamily and mixed-use developments like this, how are they? Are they, are they good? Are they not awful? Are they...
I'll say they're volatile. There's a lot of uncertainties. It's not awful now, but they're not entirely favorable. So there are some question marks. This additional extension here will give the project some wiggle room to adapt to market conditions.
So things like tariffs, elevated interest rates, lingering effects of cost increases based from COVID, those are the kinds of things that create uncertainty in the pricing of these types of things?
That is correct.
Do all of these factors, in your opinion, support the granting of the requested extension of zoning protection?
Yes. Again, it's a comprehensive project. It's going to redevelop cohesively, approximately two acres or almost two acres, immediately adjacent to the light rail. So yes, it warrants that additional extension.
This project's under a redevelopment agreement, correct?
It is.
And do you think it would make sense from a planning perspective to make the project schedule, better be a condition in the approval, that the project schedule sort of match whatever's in the redevelopment agreement, to make all of the planning documents harmonious?
Yes. Again, it will align the relevant planning documents, yes.
I think that's all we have for Mr. McDonough. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McDonough. Does anyone have any questions? Any commissioner have any questions for Mr. McDonough? Do you have no questions?
I do have one.
Do you have?
Yes. Hi, Mr. McDonough.
Hello, Commissioner.
My question is, during the construction phase, you don't anticipate any detriment to the neighborhood, like during construction, noise, obstacles on the streets, or any other type of thing, like hours operations during construction?
No. Again, you have good controls here in the city to ensure that construction will be compatible and respectful of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Mr. Misselli, for the purposes of the record, with regard to the approval, the prior approval that you wish extended through the period that the redevelopment agreement, so it coincides, will the applicant agree to a provision that once the approval of this application coincides with the redevelopment plan, you will waive the prior approval, and that will become extinct?
Yes. So what the redevelopment agreement says is that once we get the, this site plan approval, it's outside the appeals period and unappealed. Once we get the amended, there's a financial agreement. Once we get all of the, all the approvals that the city gives, and we're outside the appeals period, and those are all unappealed, that the old approval will terminate, and that if we need to submit written documentation...
Well, I'm going to request that you submit written documentation to the land use administrator, so we have it in the file, so we know that the prior approval has, has become dormant.
Absolutely, yes. We will do that as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
It, it's a question and some support and, and just a statement. John, you're aware that New Jersey Transit is undertaking a capacity study now on the Hudson-Berg and Light Rail, and we talked before you came in about not reducing the parking ratios in that area. I want to say that you may be aware that I support you not reducing it because there's a finite, finite capacity on the light rail, so we won't be able to rely on it totally in the future. So I, I support your, your, keeping your parking ratio. But, you know, for the record, Hudson-Berg and Light Rail started in nineteen ninety-six. We're now approaching twenty-twenty-six, and there, you know, there is a finite capacity during peak hours on that. So you're good to go, just stating for the record that, you know, we just have to keep an eye on that, that we can't just make a blanket statement that you have capacity on the light rail unless we talk to transit, because unfortunately, you'll be okay. But, you know, if we build a twenty-four-story building, we might have been in a different situation. So it's more to support you as a balance between transit and vehicular, which we still are achieving. Just have to put it on the record for the future.
Thank you for that, Sue. I agree a hundred percent.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. McDonough?
Hi, Caroline Silva, fifty-one North Street.
Hi there.
Hi. So I knew you just mentioned that there, in your analysis, there would be no impact to the neighbors, to like the neighborhood around. What would happen in the event that there was damage in terms of construction? Because I know that creating the foundation is a lot of work, and it could impact and send vibrations across the street. Particularly, I'm concerned about my home.
I'm just a planner, not a lawyer. I don't want to...
Okay.
I'll answer. So what I, what construction crews normally do is they usually go out and do a survey of the surrounding properties, just to get a baseline for their, their foundations, so that they know which cracks were there and which ones are, if there's one cause by us, that we would either fix it or submit it to insurance and let them pay for you to fix it. So there should be, if you would like that, done. You can contact my office, and we'll make sure that there's a survey done, so that whatever's in your basement is documented, and if something new pops up and it's on us, we fix it or we pay to fix it.
Okay.
All right?
I do have one more question.
Yeah, is it him or me?
Uh, him.
Let's see, I'll stay behind.
Or, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll stay behind.
But, and now that there's going to be more, well, if this is approved, there's going to be more traction. Currently, only one side of the sidewalk is clean. Has there been, gets the street cleaning? Has there been any ideas around street cleaning for both sides?
That's, that's really not planning either.
That's not planning either.
Yeah, sorry.
I mean, Councilman Booker, Councilman Booker is a member of the planning board. He, he would be best suited to connect with, or one of our professionals, to connect with our Department of Public Works, Director Cotter, I think that would be his area. So if you want to either speak to Councilman Booker or one of our professionals, or just call, call council, call former Councilman Cotter, sorry. He's Director Cotter now, and, and ask him if that, what his plan is. We just, we don't know yet.
Yes, I'll, I'll address that, and not to speak for the director, but I, I understand your question. It's a, it's a very good question, as you, you stated. I think that the director would probably answer that better than I would. But I, from a, my perspective, I think it's, it's only, it's only right. I mean, you're going to have all that traffic and, and people living across the street that it should be. And I'll go on the record saying the fact that that's a one side, because that, that property has been unoccupied.
Yeah.
So therefore, they didn't need to. But now, if you're going to have a, a five-hundred-unit building across the street, it's just, it's, it's a no-brainer that it should be some form of a sweep, excuse me, sweeping on that side. So therefore, the director would answer that. But I would be in favor, and I'd actually vote, vote, vote for it and go right on the record in saying that it has to be cleaned. So there's no way that it cannot be, so.
Well, the site, the, the side of this, where the, the project will be, is cleaned. But with all that traction and now six new parking spots on that side, I'm wondering, will the other side of North Street be cleaned as well?
Well, I'll go on the record saying that I definitely, if you have any questions, you can contact me in the office, and I can also reach out to the director and, but yeah, it's a very, very good question, and I think it's for the betterment of the city that, that be done. So it's a good question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, Mr. Misselli?
Thank you. That concludes our presentation tonight. What you have in front of you with the changes that you heard are, is a fully compliant...
Mike, Mike, don't sum up until we give the public an opportunity to...
Oh, sure. That's right. Yeah, I go last. That's right. Okay, so that's, we're, we're done?
Does anyone in the, does anyone have any comments they'd like to make about this project in favor or against?
Or against.
Or against? You don't want to come up? Okay. Seeing none? Any commissioners?
No, 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 no. Mr. Misselli goes now.
All right. Now my cue. See, if I only had John McDonough's timing, I wouldn't have done that. So, as I said, this is a fully compliant redevelopment plan. Once we make all the changes that we showed you, it, it is a, it is a reduction... It, it is a, it is a reduction of what was previously approved. I think it's a beautiful building. I think it's high time that we see something on that site. I think you're right. The site's been a lot of different things over the past few years. I want to see this there. We got to see something there. It's right there at the, at the end of the light rail. It deserves something beautiful and something vibrant, and I think that's what this project provides. So I would ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Misselli. Commissioners, any comments before we vote?
I believe that it's smart growth, and I wouldn't vote for it.
I, I would just like to say that I think it's, it's a very good project. I know it started way before I got here to this board. So I've, I've seen the process of changes that have been coming on from the height and all the amenities and such. So I think it's a very good project, and some good questions came up. In regards to that area, I will go on the record saying also that I live in that area, in that ward. It is going to be one of the first sites that you see coming off the Bayonne Bridge. Okay? Aesthetically, I think it's a really a good project, so I'm all for it.
If the commissioners are done, you can make a motion either for or against this project.
Need a motion?
A motion.
Second.
And the, the motion is in favor of this project?
Yes.
Okay. And on the vote, Vice Chair Valotto.
Yes.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella. The application has been approved. Yes, we have some housekeeping to attend to at the end. We have adoption of resolutions. The first is a recommendation for a historic designation with regard to P dash twenty-four dash zero-three-one, St. Andrews Church, ten West Fourth Street in City Block three-five-five Lot ten. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt that resolution?
I'll move.
Second.
And on the vote, Vice Chair Valotto.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella. Next is P twenty-four dash oh-three-five. That was the redevelopment plan for the site, forty-three dash seventy-five Mechanic Street and Northwest Route four-forty between East Twenty-second Street, East Twenty-Fifth Street in City Block four-five-one, lots one-point-oh-one, one-point-oh-two, two-point-oh-three, two-point-oh-four, and two-point-oh-five. Block four-five-two-point-zero-two, lots three through nine and eleven, former Clayton Block site. That was the amendment that Mr. Slough outlined on the record. Can I get a motion in a second with regard to that modification to that plan?
I'll move.
Second.
And on the vote, Vice Chair Valotto.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella. Oh, yeah. Let me, let me amend that for the record. That's oh-three-seven at the top, but at the bottom it had oh-three-five. So it's to re, to be consistent and correct, it's oh-three-seven. Next, P twenty-three dash zero-zero-one, area in need of redevelopment study for Block four-one-eight, lots three and four, Block four-one-nine, lots one and one-point-oh-one, Block four-point, Block four-two-seven, Lot three, Block four-eight-oh, Lot one, Block four-eight-one, lots three, three-point-oh-one, five-point-oh-three, and six, and Block four-eight-two, lots three, four, four-point-oh-one, and five, and six. And that is the IMTT site. Can I get a motion in a second to approve that study to forward to the city council?
Motion.
And on the vote, Vice Chair Valotto.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella. And last, P dash twenty-three dash zero-one-two, redevelopment plan for twenty-eight dash thirty-four, East Twenty-second Street in City Block two-one-two, lots thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, the former Vajinsky Funeral Home. Can I get a motion in a second to endorse that redevelopment plan for forwarding to the city council?
I'll move.
Second.
Vice Chair Valotto on the vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Vallos.
Aye.
Commissioner Booker.
Aye.
Commissioner Locke. Commissioner Quintella. And last, motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I knew that would be unanimous.